The following was a live study session, recorded and shared to help anyone who is studying for the Salesforce Admin Certification. This was just one out of ten recorded sessions, so make sure to check out the playlist, which I will link in the description. The structure of these videos follow the modules and lessons from my Salesforce Admin Course, which I often reference in these study sessions. But these sessions should still be helpful regardless of whether you are taking that course or not. If you do want to check out my course, follow the link in the description and submit your email, and I will email you a discount code to the Comprehensive Salesforce Admin Certification Prep Course. Anyone who enrolls gains access to the Salesforce Help Club Discord as well, where myself and others can chat directly with you about your exam prep. This session is about setup and configuration. This is Module Three in my course. Good morning, good afternoon, good evening, wherever you guys are, right? We are going to be jumping into a review of Module Three today. Hopefully you got through some of the lessons, most of the lessons. Some of it might be reviewed depending upon, you know, what your experience has been in the past, right? Like Gary, I know that you've, you just mentioned that you've, you're familiar with some of this stuff already, right? So we'll be talking about setting up Salesforce. Obviously, we're not going to get to everything you can do to set up Salesforce today, but some of those basic kind of starter settings that every admin should know, right? So let me go ahead and pull up my screen. Did you guys have any trouble with, with this module? Did it, did it all make sense to you?
I would say the only thing, Isaac, that I noticed is in my developer org, when setting up a new user, there were certain pieces or sections that I didn't have, like for the approver settings, I think, that you had in the video. I didn't have that for my user. I don't know if you wanted me to share my screen or anything?
Yeah, no, um, let's, let's hold off on that for just a second, and, and we can look at that if we have time. Otherwise, I'll just follow up on our next call and see if I can dig into it and find anything. Speaking of that, I know on our last call, we, we looked at a few things together. One of those things, and I don't know why it wasn't working when I had, had this pulled up last time, but if I go back to the Sales App, let's see here. And when I went to a list view and tried to search on the list view, let's just go to All Contacts again. I remember typing in the search box and for some reason it wasn't searching the list for what I was searching for. So I think I typed in like VP, which wasn't working. And then right after our call, I did it again and it was working. So I'm not sure why, but it's a good reminder just to say that if for some reason something seems to not be working right or seems funky in Salesforce, just click the Refresh button and then it should probably start working properly again. So just like, you know, with technology, unplug it, plug it back in. In, uh, in Salesforce, just refresh the window and a lot of the times that might, might fix that. I will say though, if you hover over this search box here, it will show you what, which fields are not searchable. So that's just something to keep in mind if you're trying to search something and it's not popping up for some reason. And I believe just another note here, if you search here, it will search more than just the fields that you have displayed as columns. So if you're looking for a specific phone number here and it's in the mobile field instead of the phone field, it should still pull up based upon that information. So just so you know, that search bar there. And then the other thing from last time that I wanted to follow up with was the Dev Org versus the Playground. I know I sent you guys a message in Slack, and I'm going to try to remember what I said there. But I'm pretty sure the, the developer org is more, you have more ownership of the developer org, right? You put in your email address, you can log in from a Salesforce login page. With the playground, you're going to Trailhead to be able to log into that playground. There may be playgrounds that you've created that were set up with specific functionality for the trail that it was made for. So you may have different functionality that way. And then with the Developer Edition Org, you have a hundred and eighty days of non-activity before it becomes deactivated, right? So if you keep using the Developer Org, it should keep working for you and you can, you can keep, keep that active. I'm sure there's more to it than that, but that's some of the quick highlights that I found and wanted to relate to you guys. Alright, so let's jump in here, talking about Salesforce Setup. We, in this module, we looked at the Setup Page. We talked about adding users and, and those different fields as you add users, company information, company settings. I think I highlighted some other tabs in Setup as well, some of those most popular Setup Pages that I use, but we didn't really dive into those other ones. I do want to say, one, one thing, one benefit of Salesforce is you can do a lot of customization using a declarative methodology. And what that means, if you haven't heard that before, is clicks over code. Maybe you've heard that, clicks, clicks over code, right? So when we are using a more declarative methodology to building an app, we are able to click into Settings, change configurations, update Settings, and that changes the user interface. Especially when we get to the next module and we're talking about custom objects and custom fields, right? You're just clicking and not having to write code. And that's one of the big wins, one of the things that sets Salesforce apart from, from some other applications out there. One, how customizable it is, but two, just the ability for people who do not know how to code to implement Salesforce and customize it. So let's talk about the Setup Page. First of all, I will put someone on the spot here. Let's go with Francis. If I am on, let's say the Sales App here, how would I navigate to the Salesforce Setup Page?
To navigate to the Salesforce Setup Page, we should click on the gear icon.
Right, yep, perfect.
And Setup.
Exactly, yeah. One thing I want to point out here is, thank you Francis, is that when I click on the gear icon here, I also see Service Setup. And some of you may have seen this before, some of you may not have seen this before. I didn't talk about this in the lesson, but I do want to go ahead and call out the difference here. And let me hit pause really quick. I'm going to mute, my two-year-old is banging on my door and I'm going to tell him to go back to his mother really quick. Hopefully you can hear me again. Okay, so I was talking about the Setup versus the Service Setup, right? So you are going to be familiar with Setup from the lessons that we went through in Module Three. If I click Service Setup, it's going to look similar but different. So we still have the panel on the left-hand side with all of these different settings and sections that we can expand. We have a big panel here in the middle with different options. But the Service Setup Home, you could probably guess, is for setting up Service Cloud and the Service Console. So everything that you see here on the left-hand side, you can get to in the regular Setup Page. So you're not missing out on any of these things here, but it is consolidated and it is reorganized in some ways, right? So if I click on Channels here, I'm going to see all of these different service channels that I can set up for Service Cloud, right from chat to email to phone. If I go back to the Standard Setup Page, I first have to go to, let's see, I think it's Feature Settings and then Service down here. And then I have a lot of these same things like Chat, Omni-Channel and other service settings that are more easily accessed here in Service Setup. So hopefully that makes sense. It's just consolidated and reorganized so that you can set up service more easily. And I, I like the way that they have this setup here. I think it makes a lot of sense for Service Cloud. And when you're setting up Service Cloud, there are so many more. I want to make sure I'm not exaggerating, but I would say there are so many more settings that you can set up for Service Cloud that seem more complex than when you're setting up Sales Cloud. So maybe that's why they have this. I'm not sure exactly why. But I do want to point out these kind of quick start wizards that are available as well on the Service Setup. So let's talk about Customize Case Status, for example. If I click Get Started, it's going to bring up this window for me. I can add new statuses to the case process, right? And then I can reorder them. I can mark which one is the default and which ones equate to a closed status, things like that. And then when I go to different spots in Setup, I will see what I just added. So there are different quick start wizards here as well. So after I, after I do one of these, a new one might pop up for me and it just helps me get started quicker. Lastly, there's some usage and performance information related to Service Cloud. So cases created and closed over time, things like that. Okay, not super important, but just in case you get confused as you go to that gear icon and wonder what the difference is between those two, I wanted to point that out. That's about it. I wanted to cover as a recap here. Did anyone find anything confusing about the Setup Page? Anything that you see here that stood out to you? That you want to talk about briefly? If not, we'll move on. Okay. Let's talk about Users next. So the first question I have, let's go to Gary with this one. When we look at the email field versus the username when you're setting up a user, what are the differences that you should keep in mind for those two different fields, right? So as we go to User and we click on Add User, can you remember or do you know the difference between the email and the username?
Yeah, yeah. So the email address has to be an actual valid email address and it has to be unique across all Salesforce instances. And your username, it can be like, I guess it, it has to be in the format of an email address, but it doesn't have to be an actual email address.
Correct, partially. I'll correct one part of that. So the email address does not have to be unique across all Salesforce instances, but the username does. You just got that part.
Ah, I got it backwards. Got it, yeah, yeah, okay.
So email does have to be a valid email. This is the email that the user will receive emails to, like their initial setup and password, right? To be able to log in or chatter notifications or updates, things like that. Email will be used for Salesforce to send emails to that user. I could have the same email on five, ten different users and ten different orgs if I wanted to.
Got it.
Username has to be unique across all of Salesforce's instances. So, and like you said, it does not have to be an actual valid email, but it does have to be in an email format.
Yep.
Alright, Emo, do you remember the difference between the alias and the nickname?
I know that alias is automatically inherited, like it's auto-populated as soon as you fill out the first name, the first and last name. There we go, yep. As for the nickname, I do believe it's sets like an ultimate, like, you know, it basically generates a random number, a unique number for the user. I mean, I'm just also checking one of the test users that I've created myself.
Yep.
But I'm not entirely sure what purpose it serves.
Yeah. So alias, yeah, they, both, you're correct, both of these will auto-populate with a default value as you fill out some of these other fields. Alias is more of an internal nickname. So as you're looking at list views and, or reports, things like that internally, alias can be used as a reference in those types of internal items. Nickname is more of an external-facing field. So things like a partner community or a client experience cloud kind of portal, nicknames could be surfaced for those purposes. So think of alias as internal, nickname as external. Alright, we have a lot of other fields here that aren't necessarily important to be able to create the user, right? I could create the user by just filling out these required fields, right? So we have these up here and then these three. So those are the most important fields. There are other fields like Title, Company, Department, Division, Phone, Call Center. So this, this would be one that you would use for Service Cloud if you have call centers set up and you have phones, phone calls being connected into Service Cloud. We have mailing address. And then this is the part, Gary, I think you said that you didn't have in your Developer Edition Org.
So, so I figured out the issue, Isaac. So when I set up my, apparently I was on the wrong URL. I don't think I was actually in a developer org. I think I was in a free trial of Salesforce.
Okay.
Well, that makes sense. So I'm actually getting that set up now, now I realized, yeah. So everything says developer, so. I may have to retract that. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yep, yep.
Great. Well, there are a few other settings that I do want to call out before we move on here. Three of these that are, are pretty important that I'd add in are Time Zone, Local, Language. Depending upon the size of your company, the, the global breadth of your company, you know what the footprint is. This could be different, right? You could set these as the default if you have everyone in a local environment. But if you have a global company, some of these things come into play a little bit more. So Default Time Zone, Default Local, Default Language. I think Time Zone and Language are easy to understand and know what they do. Local, I won't put anyone on the spot for this one, but can anyone volunteer and tell me what locale does in Salesforce?
I think it has to do with the, for example, for format, a date, I mean, date format.
Exactly.
US versus the UK one, maybe some other things. I'm not entirely sure, maybe currency?
So I think, yeah, you're totally right. So the two things that I'm most aware of would be, like you said, Emo, the date formatting. So for example, month, day, then year versus day, month, then year, right? So different places, different regions have different formatting of dates. And then same thing with names. So I know, know of those two things, right? So name order might be flipped in some instances. So locale will allow you to change those formatting settings differently than language and time zone, right? So they're not all connected and you could be in one time zone, but use, you know, you could be in Japan's time zone, but use the English language in locale if you wanted to, right? So you can set those things separately. Alright, I think that, that's a pretty good spot here. Maybe we'll see a couple more questions. Okay, let's, let's talk about user licenses just for a second as well. I talked about two in the lesson. Does anyone remember the, the two user licenses that I called out as being the most popular standard licenses you'll use?
Yeah. So the Salesforce license and then the platform license.
Correct, yep, perfect. And Gary, since you gave me that answer, I'll go, I'll flip over to Francis. You tell me, Francis, if you remember the difference between the Salesforce license and the platform license? Yeah, no, no problem. So the Salesforce license will give you all of the CRM objects with it, while the platform license gives, gives you access to some of the standard objects as well as all of the custom objects. But it doesn't give you things like opportunities, leads, campaigns, things like that. So I don't want to say something that's inaccurate, but in my experience, platform licenses cost less money, less money than the standard Salesforce license. Therefore, if you have users who are just going to be using contacts, accounts and custom objects that you create versus really being in Sales Cloud or Service Cloud and using those functionalities, then you would want to give them the platform license because they'll have access to those basic objects and the custom objects at a lower cost, right? So the Salesforce license gives you more of those CRM functionalities. I will bring up here, let's look at Licenses Overview. So if you have any questions about either of these or any of the other licenses you see, you can come here, look at the user licenses and it will describe these different types of licenses for you, right? So the license type, the description, what it's available on. I will show several documentation links today and I'll give those to you guys. I'm going to actually provide a most common document links or my favorite documentation links in a resource that I'll attach to the course so that you guys have it. You can always search and Google for this stuff on your own and it's pretty easy to find, but I will link to some of these as well. So Salesforce License versus the Salesforce Platform, you can see those differences here, right? Okay, let's jump back. Alright, another one before we move on. If I go to Users and click on Add Multiple Users, do you know how many users you can add at once using this functionality?
Is it ten?
Correct, yep. Good job, Gary. So if I click on that, I would have to choose a license first. And then it's going to show me, I only have two Salesforce Platforms, so that's why it's showing me that. I don't, I only have two licenses available, but let's click on Chatter Free, right? And then I'll see all the way up till number ten here. And then I can add in First Name, Last Name, Profile, Profile and Role. And then add these users this way. I have to be honest, I've never used this. I'll either add a few at a time manually or I'll import users with a spreadsheet. So if I'm adding lots of users, I'd rather go with the spreadsheet option. I have all of those fields that I want to fill out as columns. You know, you can do everything from the language in locale to the currency, names, emails, usernames, all of that in a spreadsheet and then import it. I didn't talk about this in the course, but if you are implementing a new Salesforce Org, you could go ahead and add users during the project before the, the Org is live. And that way you can add them to groups and queues and things like that in the platform to get it all set up and ready. And you just would not notify them. In some cases, you wouldn't have to activate the user, but you could add them all in a spreadsheet that way. And that's usually how I would do it as a consultant. Okay, let's see. Let's talk about deleting users. How would I go about deleting a user, Emo?
One thing I know for sure is you can't delete a user.
That's right. It's a trick question.
And they will remain in the system. I'm not entirely sure how long Salesforce keeps the activated users, but that will have a, basically a tag inactive. If the user is deactivated, it will have the tag inactive. I don't, yeah, well, yeah, I was about to say that you need to untick the option. Active and this basically transitions the, the user from active to inactive.
Exactly, yep. One thing I want to point out here is, thank you, Emo. When I deactivate a user, it will remove that user from certain functionality. It's not saying it here, but I believe there are scenarios where permission sets will be removed as well. So if in the future you want to reactivate this user, you'll have to do more setup than just reactivating them. You'll have to add them back to, to certain groups and permission sets if you want to reactivate them. You know, a scenario might be there's a user that's going to be on vacation this month. You deactivate them, you have a new employee coming in this month and you deactivate and then add a license for the other user so that you don't have to, you basically save a month of billing on a license. And then when the, the person comes back from vacation or leave, you can then get another license and, and assign it back to that user and activate them. That's just a silly example of how you might want to kind of go about deactivating and reactivating, but in most cases, I would say, don't do that because you might mess up certain functionality and settings for that user if you don't document it correctly. Alright, lastly, I'll just mention this really quick. If you get a user that's asking, saying they're locked out of Salesforce, they need you to reactivate their, or to reset their password, you would come in here, check that checkbox, click Reset Passwords. You can do that in mass here. As I was mentioning earlier, if I added a bunch of users to Salesforce before Go Live and now the system is live, on that day when everyone gets access, I could come in here, check all of those users, hit Reset Password, that way they all get that email with a link to login. I could also click on the user and reset their password with a button up here as well. If I click Freeze, that's going to leave the user as active, but not allow them to login. So let's just say there was an employee doing something that they shouldn't, right? There's, you need to start investigating, you know, were they stealing data, what's going on? You could just click Freeze really quick. That's going to leave their user as active. It's not going to affect anything in the system other than they can't login now. Okay, so that's what that button is for. Alright, there's something here that, let's see if I can find it, okay. When we set up two-factor authentication for users, which is required by Salesforce now in their contract, users will set up with an authentication app or something like that. They'll be able to have that second factor of authentication. Sometimes maybe they get a new phone, something like that where now they can't get into Salesforce because they don't have that second factor to be able to login. As an admin, you can come in here and reset that. There'll be a little link right here and you can reset that so that when they login next, they can redo their two-factor authentication. Just another tip, we'll get to, maybe we'll talk about that later in the course, but just so you know, as an admin, some requests that you'll get are resetting passwords, helping me login, things like that, right? So things an admin needs to know. Alright, let's move on from Users. We spent a lot of time there. Let's talk about company information. As we're in Setup, if we scroll all the way to the bottom, we'll see Company Settings. Inside of Company Settings, we have Company Information. I do know this is something that you will want to focus on for the exam, okay? So no company information, what you can find here, the different things that you might want to edit. Just as a quick highlight, there are fields that we can edit here and then there are fields that are just for viewing. So if I click on Edit, I'll know which things I can change from this page. Default locale, language and time zone are three big ones here. I can change the primary contact for the Org if Salesforce is, you know, in touch with me as the admin. Or if I'm reaching out for support, things like that, talking about contract updates and licenses. And then the currency locale as well. So if I click on Activate Multiple Currencies, I will then need to definitely choose a corporate currency. And based upon that currency that you choose for the Org currency, the, what's the word I'm looking for? Conversion rates and things like that will be based upon that Org's default currency or the corporate currency. But users can have their own currencies. You can have currencies for different regions, things like that, right? So you can activate multiple currencies, but then select that default currency. So you can activate multiple currencies, but then select that default currency. Um, let's see, I'll go back out of here. And then I wanna ask about. Data space and file space here, so. As I look at um data space, anyone uh can answer this question. What are things that should be on my mind in terms of the variables that are making this calculation for me? On how much data space has been used and how much I have available? If no one dares the answer.
Well, I mean, I deal with this on a daily basis with customers and. Uh, I don't know if this is what you're asking, but um. I guess we, I end up having to deal with like running out of space just because of like. Unused records, unused, you know, things of that nature and like cleaning some of that stuff up. So, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
So what, what do you do in those, just so we can get a real world scenario here, Gary? Um, do you deal with this personally? And if so, what do you have to do when that happens, when you are running out of space?
So two things either happen, either we go through and we kinda triage and do an assessment of if there's like, like. Uh, capture what data may be old and unused, if there's test data, test records, things like that. I take it back to my customer and we can just delete all of that. Or we, every one of my customers has a CSM and we can just increase their storage for a price. So, those are the two ways we deal with it.
Exactly, yeah, I'm glad you um were able to talk through that, so. When I'm looking at data space, I'm thinking um, the org gets a default like starting amount of space, right? Each user license adds more space, not all of them, but the standard user licenses do. So tho- those are two ways that you get space and then as Gary said, you can buy more space. Um, I wouldn't say it's cheap by any means. So if you can, like Gary said, um, remove things that are not needed, remove records, maybe they were te- test records. Maybe they are records that are ten years old and you don't necessarily need them. Um, maybe they're not the core records, but. You know, some um ancillary types of records that that you don't need over time. Things like that, then you can either delete them or hopefully you're exporting them, right? You're saving them in some way. Uh, maybe you put them in some other cloud storage where um users could access to or certain users could access if they need it. But it's just not important for the day to day, things like that, right? So you can offload um and remove those. There are some other ways that you can go about that, but I just want you to think about how you get more space. And how you can resolve the issue if it occurs. Um, I do want to note that file space is different than data space, right? So if if users are attaching files, PDFs, Excel documents, whatever to a record in Salesforce. That is taking up a different chunk of usage space in Salesforce with a different limit. And and same thing with this, if you're running out of space, maybe you think about uh offloading some of those files. Or you can a- add more space. Um, if you're adding more users, you'll automatically get a little bit more. Or you can just buy chunks of storage space. Okay, I think that's enough on that. Um, maybe the last thing we'll we'll talk about here is the instance. You may have not got to this lesson yet, um, but can anyone tell me what, why an instance is important? Why would I need to know this information?
I think it's useful, it's some kind of a code which you can use and check on the um. Uh, on different website where you can sort of track the stability and downtime of different service in Salesforce, if I'm not mistaken.
Exactly, you nailed it. So if I go to. Uh, let's see, not org dot com, sorry, trust dot Salesforce dot com. You're, you're exactly right, Emo. I can come in here and I can check on the status. Of the instance that my org is a part of. So the instance, um. I don't know if technically it's the exact same thing as a server, but I believe an instance is a server or uh instances are on. Specific servers and that's how they can document the downtime, the status. Uh, of your Salesforce org as well as when maintenance is scheduled to be performed on your instance. Right? So Salesforce is doing it chunk by chunk, um, instance by instance. Rather than, you know, everything being updated at the same time, right? So that's, they're able to separate out orgs that way onto these different instances. And if I go into status. I can check on the different status of different um products here. If I go back to Salesforce, let's click on sales and service here. Looks like there was one recent incident. If I click on status, I should be able to see all of the instances here. So it looks like in the EU. There was some issue that happened recently, right? And we can see it affected the core service. And they'll give you the details of what's happening, what they're doing and then how they resolved it, things like that. But if I go back here, I should be able to, I'm gonna test this. Copy and then try to find this instance that my developer edition org is on. Click into that and now I see the overall system status of all of this different functionality. I can see the history of this instance. And then I can see the maintenance schedule for this instance. So if we scroll down, we can see. Um, Salesforce has three main releases a year. So the summer twenty four major release is happening on June eighth for my instance where my developer additional org is. Okay, so different people might get the updates at different days, different times. And this is when mine would be happening. So this is important if you're an admin. And your Salesforce org is about to change in certain ways. You want to be aware of when that is happening so that you can update your users of what to expect. Right? So if they're used to go into a contact list view and now there's this new functionality happening. You want to be prepared to be able to let them know about that release. So. I think that's enough about instance, but that's why you would care about this information. Org ID, that's just your ni- your unique ID. Every org has a unique ID and this is how you identify that org. Down below, we have licenses, so we have total licenses, used licenses and then how many are remaining. So as I clicked on add new user earlier, you saw when I clicked on license, that Salesforce wasn't an option. Because I've already used both of mine in this org. Permission set licenses, feature licenses, don't wanna hang out here too long, but um. If I was adding a user, you'd see that uh marketing user, knowledge user, things like this were checkboxes. On the user record and I would need these feature licenses to be able to uh check those checkboxes. When I'm creating that user or editing. Um, and then you have usage based entitlements, so limits on certain functionality in Salesforce. And you can check where you are um in relation to your allowance. I haven't had too many cases where I've had to worry about this, but it is something to be aware of. There are certain allowances. For, let's say, API requests, for example. Alright. I think um. That's a good jumping off place there. Lastly, let's talk about company settings. So, we talked about company information down here. There are several other settings, setup pages that I wanna talk about. Business hours and holidays go hand in hand. Um, Emo, since you've been involved in Service Cloud a little bit. Um, have you come across either of these? Are you familiar with using or leveraging business hours and holidays in Service Cloud?
Yeah, I'm aware of it. It's not that I've uh been using that myself. Uh, but I do certainly know that, for example, admins in uh. One of my client's companies had to use this pretty much often because they had to uh, you know, align with so many. Local holidays in the UK. Just to make sure the service isn't running on the days that we were not supposed to work. Um, so that was essential. But uh, my understanding is that by default it is set to operate twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. So you have to make sure you change it.
Exactly.
Works different, or you have a a certain schedule, a fixed schedule.
Yep, yep. So um, thank you. Um, so business hours. If I create, you know, a UK division and a New Zealand division, those different teams can have. Different uh business hours, even but different holidays associated with their um service team. And that way, when someone is uh on a browser in the UK. And they access the service page and they go through, you know, a web two case, something like that or chat. Um, now those, those business hours and holidays are going to affect things like escalation rules. And you know, whether or not someone is gonna be shown as available to chat, things like that, right? So um, that's what you're affecting here. You can set all sorts of business hours, but there is only one default. For the whole org. Um, and then with holidays, if I click on New Zealand here. You can see the holidays that I've associated with these business hours, right? So those work hand in hand. Um, I don't think we need to talk about those a whole lot more. Um, I do know that I've been able to use these um, or at least holidays. And different app exchange apps as well. So um, for like a project management app. Um, they could reference the holidays so that as I'm creating my schedule for a project. It can show that it can skip that holiday as a part of a workday um in my project management app. So um, you can use that outside of Service Cloud as well, but um. In CRM, tha- that's kind of a main reason why you'd set up business hours and holidays. Uh, let's look at fiscal year. So we can create, this is a bad example because, or maybe it's a good example. So I enabled um custom fiscal year and now I can't go back. And that is something I wanna call out, because it's something that you wanna think about before you enable in your actual production org, right? You don't want to enable something that you can't go back on. Um, so you gotta be sure about this. If your company does need a custom fiscal year. Uh, you can create that custom fiscal year. I have never had the need to do this. I always use the standard fiscal year. Uh, where you can set the the month where that fiscal year is starting. It'll start on the first of that month. And then you can change it um varying based on months, right? I wish I could show that now, but um, do you know that you you can't go back once you enable the custom fiscal year? And then language settings, I think I've, nope. Okay, so we have these standard language settings here or languages that are available here. I moved them all into the displayed languages and what that does is it allows my users to select from one of these. As their own language, right? So I have a default language set and company information. But here, I'm I'm selecting what's available to the users in my org to either select themselves. Or when I add them as a user, I can select that for them. Okay, so that's the the languages that are available. The ones that are in use are grayed out. But then I can use these other languages up here as well and add to this list and move them over. There's just less uh functionality and support with some of these other languages. You can see there's a lot here. So that's nice, but it doesn't have the full functionality that these standard languages in the system have that are fully functional.
So a quick question, does it mean that some of the features and um settings would still be in English if the language is in fully supported?
Good question, good question. Um, so I believe. In it, this, this one, um, end user languages, it's only help and setup that are not translated and I believe those would, those would be. In whatever default language you selected for the org. So it does, it's not necessarily English, but if the org default is English, then yes, to answer your question. And then with the platform only languages, um, some of these al- align to a specific. Uh, language, so like um French, Canadian, for example, I don't know if this is a good example. Um, might have a default of French, right? So the functionality that isn't available. Would be seen in the standard French rather, rather than the Canadian French or something like that, right? So if we go to, maybe here we can see um these languages. I had come across documentation somewhere that showed how they related. I'll try to find that. Maybe for the next call. Um, but it showed. These platform only languages and which language they were associated with as kind of that fallback language, I believe. Because. When you are, when you are adding these languages, they're not fully supported and you can update. Um, translations in the uh, what's it called? The translation workbench? Yeah, in the translation workbench. And so these languages allow you to add in those custom translations for your org. But they have kind of that base language that they're associated with. Um, good question. And then last thing here that I wanted to touch on really quick is my domain. Okay, so if we go back to company settings. Can anyone tell me what my domain does before I click on it? Let's go back to uh Francis, we'll pick on you again. If you're with us, Francis, what does my domain allow you to do? Perfect, yep. Exactly, yeah, so um, when you search for and uh create a. Uh, custom domain called my domain, you are able to add in a custom prefix or subdomain. Before the um my Salesforce dot com part, right? So it's gonna show up here. And then when your users go to login, that's gonna be the URL that they see. And then you can customize with uh custom logo, background colors, authentication settings. To be associated with your specific URL. Um. Yeah, so if I click on deploy, I've already changed this one, so I'm not gonna sh- I'm not sure what it's gonna do. If I try to change it again. Let's try in here. Oh, great, okay. They kicked me out. Um. Anyways, my domain, since I already set that, it's gonna be a little bit different, but you can, you can check for the availability of a subdomain. And then set that for your org and that gives you some additional functionality. I could be mis- mistaken, but I believe my domain might be required now or soon into the future. It's definitely something that you want set up for your org regardless. Okay, we went through a lot. Um, I don't like talking that much. So let's get to maybe some final details here. Um, as I said, documentation that Salesforce has is pretty great. If you go to help dot Salesforce. Dot com, let's go back to twelve here. Uh, help dot Salesforce dot com, that will take you to the. Just do it here. That'll take you to the help um home where you can access a lot of different documentation. So I could search by specific products, um, look at these different categories of resources. But then there's just this search bar across the top as well, right? So I could type in. Um, I think these are just top items here, but yeah, let's look at spring twenty four release notes. And then I'm gonna see documentation. Um, and I can filter further here and I can click on any of these. One thing that I will note um is to, there are so many different products. So when you, when you look and find an article, make sure that the article is about the product that you care about. So if I type in, let's say, holidays. And I click on one of these top articles. What I like to do is um, on the left-hand side, there's this uh menu that I can scroll up and down on. Let's try to refresh again, and I'll, I'll scroll up to the top of that. Hopefully one of my kids didn't unplug my internet, let's see if this loads, okay. If I scroll up to the top, I'll see, okay, this is about Service Cloud. So when I'm seeing this documentation, documentation about holidays, I know it's um in the context of Service Cloud. But, let's maybe click on another one to see if I can give you a good example. Considerations for holidays, so now as I scroll up on this one, I think it's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna say. Salesforce scheduler. And it's all about managing appointments with Salesforce scheduler, and that is an add-on product, right? So the documentation I'm seeing here is uh specifically geared towards the add-on product, so it might be misleading. So just keep that in mind as you search, as you look at documentation, try to understand the context in which that page is uh talking about. Um, okay, I think that's a good place to stop, while you guys are going through the lessons, let's just end on this, um. I don't know if you took notes, if there was anything else that stood out, if you had any other questions. If so, go ahead and bring those up now and we can, we can talk through those, otherwise I'll have a, go ahead, Emo.
Yeah, so this uh help us um, or sort of support center, is it similar to the Trailhead? Because you can also learn things here, but does it not have maybe like step-by-step guides?
They do have step-by-step guides, yep, so if I go to, let's go to um. Back on to users, which I was on just a second ago here, might have to go back a couple. Um. Let's go back again, so within this section, let's see here. User management settings, user, user management administration, if I click on this. Uh, view and manage users. And then add a single user, if I click on this, right, it's gonna show me step-by-step, this is, I think this is what you're talking about, right? It's gonna show step-by-step guides on how to add a single user versus how to add multiple users. Um, and I think Trailhead is really good for learning. Um, an initial learning of a product or a cloud, and then when you get to needing to reference something. And, you know, a real role, something that you've already learned, something that you should know, documentation is probably gonna be the better place to go. Um, it's gonna be more thorough, it's gonna give you best practices, um, things to be cautious about. Um, and then you'll see all of these other related articles right by it, right? So it's, this is a good place to be, I could be wrong, but I believe a lot of certifications actually. Might poll specifically from documentation, rather than something like Trailhead as well. So if you want to be um as precise as possible in preparation for a certification now or in the future. I think documentation would be your best bet, however, that said, Trailhead is very good at giving you a path. Right, so lesson by lesson, module by module, it will take you on a specific path through information. In a way that's better than this, in my opinion. Good question, though. Any other questions, thoughts?
I'll just verify, I was gonna say, Isaac, I am good, I'm in the developer org now, so I have all the, all the things.
Perfect, good.
Good now, yep.
Yeah, I was about to ask if you're going to upload any more questions that we would need to um sort of answer at the end of, of the modules.
Uh, if you're talking about the quiz. Yes, I just, I, I added a quiz just a little bit ago. Um, there's probably just like seven questions for each module. And then at the end of the whole course, I'll have practice tests with a lot more questions. So for each module, I'm trying to keep it short and to the point, trying to just hit some of the highlights of things that you need to know. And then at the end of the course, there'll, there will be two larger practice tests with a lot more questions as well.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, I will send out a calendar invite, I won't forget this week. And uh, we'll, we'll plan on being together next week, if something comes up, let me know. Um, if you have any questions, uh, you can send them my way in Slack throughout the week. I don't have uh module four yet, um, it should be up by the end of the day, I'll hit you up in Slack to let you know when it's live.
Good.
Awesome.
Alright, thank you guys, I'll see you next week.
Good to see y'all.
Alright, bye-bye. Thanks for watching, hopefully you got something out of this session, make sure to check out the playlist for the next video in the series. If you want to check out my comprehensive course, click the link in the description. Make sure to subscribe for more Salesforce content to help you on your Salesforce journey. And please like the video because that helps me out, see you in the next one.